We have Kiara Larnigan. She is our new student member of the school committee. She is an ex-officio member, a non-voting member, but she is a member of the school committee. Welcome.
Welcome.
Glad to get her a name.
Yes, so Mrs. Policie ordered a name plate and it's on its way. So hopefully we'll have it at the next meeting.
Excuse me, can you hold?
What?
Can we vote after we open the meeting?
Yes, we voted to open the meeting. It was unanimous. I have a few, a couple of statements I need to read. So, we have, "At the October 8th, 2019, school committee meeting, we violated students' privacy when we announced students' names associated with academic achievement. School committee policy J.I., Students' Rights and Responsibilities, was put in place for all students to be safe and always know that their progress will remain confidential. We meant no ill will and apologize to all the students and families whose names were announced. In the future, parents and students will be notified and asked if they want to be recognized and announced at school committee meetings. Regarding the inappropriate video, events such as this are stark reminders that there is more work to do amongst our students regarding cultural humility and sensitivity. We will continue to educate students about the world they live in. We ask that you continue to have the challenging conversations at home so we can reduce ignorance and perpetuate acceptance." Thank you.
If I may, let me follow up. We are going to continue to work with our student body. We feel that they are going to be up in front of this. I think that they need to lead us through this. I think it's their voices that we need to listen to. I will say this again. Kids make mistakes. We, as adults, make mistakes, but we are the educators and we need to come around and listen. And we have a culturally diverse thought process. I'd like to think that we are a culturally diverse school district that believes that there should be no bigotry or hatred or racism, and that diversity is something that we embrace, not push away. We are going to continue to work with the student body. I know that Principal Sylvia is working around the clock right now and we're discussing lots of things and working with his student body. I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Williams. As you know, I've asked for to spearhead us moving forward with the speakers and working with community organizations. I received some calls that I pushed over to Dr. Williams' office. I did speak to the former president of the NAACP out of Brockton. I have not spoken to the president who sits now, who was on TV a week ago, but I did speak to the former, and he has offered his assistance, he has offered his time. We need patience, we need to work together, we need our parents to work with us, we need to work with students, and I know that we are looking, I don't think our students want guest speakers, I don't think they want anybody just talking at them. We've heard a lot that you want to be part of the conversation, that the students want to steer this, that this is their ship, they want to help us, you know, right the ship, as we would say, and steer it out of this, you know, get it out of the harbor and really keep it moving. Dr. Williams has been in conversations, and they were actually in one probably three, four hours this morning, but I'll let you go ahead.
Sure. As the superintendent said, certainly, we want students to take the forefront and the lead because certainly they are going to have the respect of their peers through this and through the decisions that are made going forward. So, working with Mr. Sylvia, we really feel it's important that we provide the support and the resources that students will need as we put things in place. And it was wonderful to hear that we had about thirty-five students that came forward interested in forming a united group, club. I don't know if they've come up with an official name yet at this point, the Unity, did you come up with a name today?
Yes, I believe it's called the Unity Club.
Unity Club, perfect. So, our hope is to now meet with the club and ask them, what can we do to help support them? I've been in contact with a number of supports and resources. Number one, Bridgewater State University, they've been phenomenal with getting us the supports we need through their multicultural center, as well as we met with Dr. Winchell today from Bridgewater State University about professional development for our staff, about climate surveys that the club might be interested in doing with the student body to see the direction that they want to take, but we don't want to force anything on them because certainly we want it to be something that they're receptive to and something that they're going to learn and grow from. So, our plan is to sort of hear from them, what they're most interested in, and lay out for them some of the options that we have as far as whether it is guest speakers, workshops, and hearing more from their student body as to where they're at, so that we know where we need to go from there. So, it's great. As the superintendent said, you know, we heard from a lot of people, and it's, you know, extremely supportive when we hear from people who want to help, they want to improve the situation. And parents who have extended themselves, they have experience in their own personal lives that they can bring to the table, as well as professional people that have reached out to us, other districts who have dealt with similar issues, that have found success with different associations that they've made contact with, and they've reached out to us. So, I feel like we have a lot of opportunities for us, it's just making the best decisions so that we develop something that's sustaining and not like a one-shot fix and then we move on. We want to develop an action plan so that we put something in place that's going to be supportive of the students and something that they feel is going to be most beneficial for them.
Ms. Williams, in the thought process to this point in time, I realize it's not complete, is the thought to extend this down into the lower grades as well too?
Absolutely.
To start the thought process there.
Yes. So, one of the conversations that we had today is, you know, certainly there's many clubs and groups on college campuses, and maybe having them talk with our high school students about some things that they can take into consideration, and then certainly using our high school students to then work with our students in the lower grades as well, so that the younger student body can kind of look to the old students for some guidance and direction.
Excellent, thank you.
Ciara, you're part of the student body, you're part of the district, you're part of the East Bridgewater community. Do you feel that this is the direction that we need to go in with, working with you and not just leading the way as teachers or administrators do? We want you to take the ball and to help us understand why we still may have some differences in listening to each other.
Yeah, when the video was first released and when we came back to school after Halloween, there was a big concern that that first assembly that we had would be just telling us what to do and what to say and to stop and to just be kind. But, a lot of students, as reflective as also going back to actions taken last year, a lot of students feel the need to be incorporated into school activities and not forced into them, and that generally receives a lot of more positive agreement.
Good. And I think that's the way to go. I'd rather listen to, support the students, offer resources as much as Dr. Williams and I can from our vantage point, and support them, and the students and the teachers and the staff all related. You know, when kids come to us at three and a half, at four, at five, at the central school, we don't see this. We see every child, and they see each other as friends, as buddies, as going out and seeing one sitting on a buddy bench, another will go over and sit next to them and ask them to play. We see this as time goes on, as kids become more engaged in life and understand more of life situations. These are learned, this is learned. We need to educate everyone, that everyone has the right to be who they are, where they stand, where they live, where they go to school, regardless of race, religion, background, transgender, gay, whatever it is that we are and who we want to become in life, there's a place for them here in East Bridgewater. And every public school district should feel that same way. I am sorry that this happened, but we're going to fix it, and the only way we can fix it is as a group and as a community and as learners. So, I think that we're ready to move on.
Yeah, and certainly we'll be coming back to the committee and sharing, you know, next steps that the students have put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next up, we have a letter from Peter Schaefer, superintendent of the Abington Public Schools, and he says, "East Bridgewater has been and is a neighbor we can count on in a time of need. The assistance you provided by sending professional counseling staff to help our students grieve the tragic loss of beloved classmates is sincerely appreciated. I cannot adequately express the amount of good work done for Abington children by your people. They provided a calm, compassionate, and therapeutic environment under terrible circumstances. They were thoughtful, thorough, and excellent collaborators with our staff. Most importantly, they were readily willing and able to do whatever was needed. I thank you personally for your insistence and being there for us. I also want to thank you on behalf of the children and families of Abington." It's a nice letter.
I've spoken to Peter a few times. It's a tragic loss for them and for that elementary school, and I'm sure that they're going to take some time to heal, but I know that the community has come together for that family. You know, I'd like, just want to thank Tom Mahoney and Nicole Wadsworth, were the counselors that we sent up, and they did a terrific job. We called them, wait, when we heard about it, I was talking to Peter and I yelled into Gina's off, Dr. Williams' office and asked her to make some calls, and we sent them up right away. So, I want to thank those two individuals.
Great, thank you. We have a special guest this evening. In addition to our student member of the school committee, Kiara Larnigan is going to give us a brief overview of her visit to the United Nations in New York City.
Hi, yes, so I just want to start off by thanking you all for giving me the opportunity to share my story and how I believe that East Bridgewater can become more environmentally friendly. So, I first became interested in the climate crisis when I first heard that the majority of Cape Cod would be lost to the rising ocean tides. And so, it was during last spring when during, so Mr. Savage, for our final, we would have to create a multi-genre project, and I chose to do mine about the climate crisis. And so, for doing that research, I came across Earth Uprising, the organization I am now currently involved with. Part of, one of my genres was an interview with the founder, Alexandria Villasenor, who has been striking in front of the United Nations for almost one year now. It was through that multi-genre project where I became connected with Earth Uprising and how Earth Uprising first became on my radar. And so, when in June that I found that they were looking for city coordinators, I volunteered myself for Boston and I got the position. That was my first local organizing position. Over the next couple of weeks, I became involved with our first campaign, Climate Strike Summer, where over eight weeks, we striked at different locations throughout Boston, targeted at different aspects of the climate crisis. For example, the first week was against the media, where myself, two of my cousins and some of their friends, we striked at Channel Seven News, and we actually got the opportunity to speak with some of the anchors. We didn't get on TV, but it was still really exciting to talk with them. Over time, I rose up throughout Earth Uprising, and I became their internal communications coordinator. That was my national role, where I became connected with our city coordinators all over America, and I would help them organize, and I would help them have the resources and the funding that they would need for their strikes. I also worked with the Climate Mobilization, who was the leading organization behind the Climate Emergency Declaration. To get that passed through Congress, I helped plan a lot of their events. Then, in, right before school started, the last weekend in August, I traveled to Iowa as one of Earth Uprising's representatives. There is a coalition called Future Coalition, which is a joining of many environmental organizations, and that is where we came up with many ideas for the September twentieth global strike. It was shortly after I got back from Iowa, where I found out that I was invited to the United Nations Youth Climate Summit. For that, I traveled to New York City. I took part in the September twentieth global strike. I got to hold the banner and march in it, which was very, very exciting, and I got to talk with media from France and India, and I got into an article in The New Yorker. And then, I spoke at, and then I spoke at the United Nations to present Earth Uprising's hashtag MyUprising campaign, which is a way to uplift local communities when we launch our website. Following my weekend in September, I took on the task of redesigning Earth Uprising's internal structure, and I became their continental board coordinator, where I am now involved with people from all over the world. Just this past week, I have had calls with people from Australia, Brazil, and Italy. That was my first international role. And we are currently planning an Earth Uprising retreat and Earth Uprising campaigns. I've already started to bring Earth Uprising into the school a little bit more with our environmental club. That is guided by Mrs. Sheen and Ms. Hanson, and we are currently planning on how to make a positive community impact in creating an eco-friendly holiday guide.
I have an office for you right down the hallway.
That's awesome.
Real quick, when did this start? Like, what was the start?
Last weekend.
Like, this is more than I've done in my entire life.
I wanted, I interviewed Alexandria for my project on the end of May of this year.
So, from the end of May until now, all that stuff happened?
You start tomorrow. Right down the hallway.
And the environmental club was not in existence. Kiara went to Mrs. Sheen, and there was some talk of it, I think, last year maybe.
Yeah, so there was.
Didn't really get going.
Yeah, so there was an environmental club from last year, though they weren't really anything official, and then a group of freshmen started one with Mrs. Hanson, and so, Mrs. Sheen and I joined them, and we're now working with them to see what we can do.
Very impressive.
I'm not easily impressed.
I'm blown away. I wish I.
And I'm, this is, I'm impressed.
I was trying to think of something eloquent to say, don't have anything other than I'm so impressed by that, and your parents and family must be really proud of you and impressed too. You know, it's student activism at its finest, so congratulations for your efforts.
Thank you.
It's fantastic.
Best advice I could ever give anybody, or from my own life experiences, observing other people, is to me, the highest point to aim for is to make a difference, and a positive difference at that. You are well on your way. None of us can look back on our lives and feel any better than we can look at events where you said, oh, I made a positive difference here, and you are certainly doing that and then some. You'll be able to coast the rest of your life, but I suspect you probably won't.
I like the fact that you reached out and you did it yourself, and that this was, you wanted to do, make a difference, and it's important to you, so you reached out and said, hey, you know, I'm available, I'll come to Boston, and you get, you go to Boston, and you, then you go down to DC, and then you're over here, and then you're in The New Yorker. You're doing all of these things, not for you, but for the global climate change and what's happening globally with our, with our climate. And you're doing it all for the environment and for yourself and activism. You must have a strong sense of sciences going forward. Where would, what do you think?
Going forward, I can definitely see myself more on the political side of things and making sure that environmental policy is there from the beginning and that there is no more need for student activism, because it does start to take a toll, because there are many nights where, as my parents can attest to this, I am up pretty late after some calls, and I don't think that if we had these policies already in the beginning, then there wouldn't be a need for this. And so, I want to be the person who helps create that.
Well, I can tell you that many people who are in the political world start on a school committee. So, you're already a quarter way there for whatever you want to do. Congratulations, this is really great. Mr. Sylvia, I hope that you are supporting this young woman and the rest of this group. Yeah? Maybe you can put a garden up on top of the building.
She maintains high life, so.
When do you go to school?
I was thinking to myself, and I better classwork's all done too. You're amazing.
Thank you.
That's great, good job. Thank you.
And you've spent a lot of time at the agricultural schools in the last few weeks. Environmental sciences is the new N to work in exactly what you are trying to, to build those fields that will hopefully accomplish what you want to accomplish, and hopefully the political climate will support that. Have you reached out to any of our legislators or members of Congressmen? Yet?
No, not currently.
All your spare time.
Yeah, no, but I've been currently working on Earth Uprising campaigns, and so I'm waiting until I have the foundation of that before I start doing any reaching out.
Do they have a website?
Yes, it's earthuprising.org.
On the site, does it have the video clip of the group of you speaking at the UN?
No, we are, that is one of the projects that we're actually working on. We're working on creating content for the new Earth Uprising webpage that will hopefully be launching in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. I don't know how to share the Twitter feed, but if I can figure that out, okay. And I can share that with you, because Mrs. Larnigan had shared that with me the day that Kiara was speaking, so. And I'm glad, because I had the same reaction when I met with her, I was like, ah, I don't even know what to say right now.
If we're going to put something on blast, it should be this.
Yes, and it's great that you're on the committee, because now you can give the committee updates as the club moves forward with some of the initiatives that you plan.
Yeah, how we can be better global citizens.
Yeah, exactly.
As a school, as a community, as a world.
Yeah, it's been quite the crazy couple of past months, and I think it's very interesting to think that it all came from Mr. Savage's multi-genre project.
And what is this class?
This was tenth grade English.
That's awesome. How'd you go from tenth grade English to speaking at the US?
Kiara, are you planning to give us a report tonight about the Student Advisory Council?
Yes, I do have a couple of announcements that were announced at Student Senate this past afternoon. Starting off, the math club placed third in their competition last Thursday, which is the highest that they've ever placed in the history of its existence. Student Senate is also preparing for the blood drive, which is going to be held at the high school on December sixth. Spanish four students are taking a field trip tomorrow to Harvard to study Spanish culture. DECA is taking a field trip tomorrow to the state house. Clubs are generally planning for the Christmas on the common booths. And then, in light of the circumstances from the past couple of weeks, students have formed a unity club to better the culture that they feel at school. In continuing that, the school is also taking part in a six-week kindness challenge that, for the most part, students are having fun with. I saw, there were a lot of laughs in my Viking block today of students already preparing for it.
You're going to have an Earth Uprising booth at Christmas on the common, because, you know, we could do some recording.
That would be funny.
Thank you. Next up, we have superintendent Legos, Community Corner.
Fall sports have come to the end. I know the boy soccer banquet is tomorrow.
Yes.
Night third, they finished their season. Girl soccer, great game last night, played two to one over Hanover. It was awesome, I was up there. The kids did really well. They had, they had to wait for like about forty-five minutes after two double overtimes for the game before us. The Dover Sherburne against Norwell, we are going to play Dover Sherburne, who won that game, and we will be playing them on Saturday at 3:00 PM for the South Shore Championship.
South Sectionals?
South Sectionals Championship.
Where will that game be located?
Norwell.
Norwell.
Football has come to an end, but they play Thursday, Thanksgiving Day in the morning. I believe it's a 10:30 start. Patrick is down in the Hall of Fame meeting right now, I thought he would be down here as we were going through this, but we are still going to have the bonfire, and it will be on Tuesday that week. They're putting together, and I know that Patrick's working with the, a lot of the kids that play the sports, and they'll be working, doing a bunch of games for younger kids, so we're going to start promoting this at the Mitchell and the Central School. Mr. Shea said he will support getting hot dogs again, so we'll be, everybody will get a free hot dog. It's free to come to, we'll announce the kids that played sports in the fall. Mr. Ponti, we usually try to bring the band out if we can. Mr. Condon will be here with his DJing, and they'll do a lot of things for the kids and have some games and.
Is that the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week?
Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. It's at the 26th.
We have a meeting that night.
Yes, but hopefully we'll have it out by the bonfire.
Do we know what time the bonfire is at?
Start it early. Tomorrow's, yes, tomorrow's Unified Soccer at 4:00 PM, and it is going to be a, I think it's a round robin, I think, is it Thursday?
Oh, Thursday.
Thursday at four. It's a round robin, right, with Abington and West Bridgewater? No, whole, Carver and Abington?
Abington, yeah.
Yeah, they're coming here though.
Yeah.
We're going to have it here, okay. I think we had a great fall season. You know, you go out there and you see a lot of kids participating, the band, the kids that do, that work with the band and the flags.
Color guard.
Color guard, I forgot, sorry, what am I? To see as many kids as we're getting for the band, I'm very excited about that, because we've been really pushing that the last few years to come in, because I think that we do a great job of the music program down at Mitchell School, and some of the kids don't go into the band at the high school level, for whatever reason, because there's so much going on. But it's nice to see we have a student who plays football and then plays the drums in the band, so that's nice to see. We've got a great cheerleading squad, done a great job, they won state championships last year. This year, they're doing a great job out on the field with, they've been out there a couple of times, we've had some great senior nights with girls and boy soccer. I've seen out there field hockey, we had one, football. It's nice to see a community coming together for the athletic programs. As we go inside, now, as we start to go forward into the winter sports season, we're going to see a lot more of the music program, because now we're going to start to see the concerts, for the Christmas concerts down here at the Mitchell School, and we'll have one here at the high school. So, a lot of things coming inside, not only are athletic programs starting
Very impressive.
I'm not easily impressed.
I'm blown away. I wish I-
And I'm, this is, I'm impressed.
I was trying to think of something eloquent to say. Don't have anything other than I'm so impressed by that. And your parents and family must be really proud of you and impressed too. You know, it's student activism at its finest, so congratulations for your efforts.
It's fantastic.
Best advice I could ever give anybody, or from my own life experiences observing other people, is to me the highest point to aim for is to make a difference, and a positive difference at that. You are well on your way. None of us can look back on our lives and feel any better than we can look at events where you said, "Oh, I made a positive difference here," and you are certainly doing that and then some. You'll be able to coast the rest of your life, but I suspect you probably won't.
I like the fact that you reached out and you did it yourself and that this was, you wanted to do, make a difference. And it's important to you, so you reached out and said, "Hey, you know, I'm available. I'll come to Boston." And you get, you go to Boston, and you, then you go down to DC, and then you're over here, and then you're in The New Yorker. And you're doing all of these things, not for you, but for the global climate change and what's happening globally with our, with our climate. And you're doing it all for the environment and for yourself and activism. You must have a strong sense of sciences going forward. What do you think?
Going far forward, I can definitely see myself more on the political side of things and making sure that environmental policy is there from the beginning and that there is no more need for student activism, because it does start to take a toll, because there are many nights where, as my parents can attest to this, I am up pretty late after some calls. And I don't think that if we had these policies already in the beginning, then there wouldn't be a need for this. And so I want to be the person who helps create that.
Well, I can tell you that many people who are in the political world start on a school committee. So you're already a quarter way there for whatever you want to do. Congratulations. This is really great. Mr. Sylvia, I hope that you are supporting this young woman and the rest of this group. Yeah? Maybe you can put a garden up on top of the building.
When do you go to school?
I was thinking to myself, "And I better classwork, so I'll done too." You're amazing.
Thank you.
That's great. Good job. Thank you.
I've spent a lot of time at the agricultural schools in the last few weeks. Environmental sciences is the new win. To work in exactly what you are trying to, to build those fields that will hopefully accomplish what you want to accomplish. And hopefully the political climate will support that. Have you reached out to any of our legislators or members of Congressmen?
Uh, no, not currently.
All your spare time.
Yeah. No, but I've been currently working on Earth Uprising Campaigns, and so I'm waiting until I have the foundation of that before I start doing any reaching out.
Do they have a website?
Yes, it's earthuprising.org.
On the site, does it have the video clip of the group of you speaking at the UN?
No, we are act, that is one of the projects that we're actually working on. We're working on creating content for the new Earth Uprising webpage that will hopefully be launching in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. I don't know how to share the Twitter feed, but if I can figure that out, okay. And I can share that with you, because Mrs. Lonigan had shared that with me the day that Kiara was speaking. And I'm glad, because I had the same reaction when I met with her. I was like, "Ah, I don't even know what to say right now."
If we're gonna put something on blast, it should be this.
And it's great that you're on the committee, because now you can give the committee updates as the club moves forward, some of the initiatives that you plan.
Yeah, how we can be better global citizens.
Yeah, exactly.
As a school, as a community, as a world.
Yeah, it's been quite the crazy couple of past months. And I think it's very interesting to think that it all came from Mr. Savage's multi-gender project.
And what is this class?
This was 10th grade English.
That's awesome. How'd you go from 10th grade English to speaking at the UN? Another day in your life.
Do you, are you planning to give us a report tonight about the Student Advisory Council?
Um, yes, I do have a couple of announcements that were announced at Student Senate this past afternoon. Starting off, the math club placed third in their competition last Thursday, which is the highest that they've ever placed in the history of its existence. Student Senate is also preparing for the blood drive, which is going to be held at the high school on December 6. Spanish four students are taking a field trip tomorrow to Harvard to study Spanish culture. DECA is taking a field trip tomorrow to the State House. Clubs are generally planning for the Christmas on the common booths. And then in light of the circumstances from the past couple of weeks, students have formed a unity club to better the culture that they feel at school. And continuing that, the school is also taking part in a six-week kindness challenge that, for the most part, students are having fun with. I saw, there were a lot of laughs in my Viking block today of students already preparing for it.
You're gonna have an Earth Uprising booth at Christmas on the common, because, you know, we could do some recording.
That would be funny.
Thank you. Next up, we have Superintendent Legault's Community Corner.
Fall sports have come to the end. I know the boy soccer banquet is tomorrow.
Yes.
Night third, they finished their season. Girl soccer, great game last night, played two to one over Hanover. It was awesome. I was up there. The kids did really well. They had to wait for like about 45 minutes after two double overtimes for the game before us. The Dover Sherburne against Norwell. We are going to play Dover Sherburne, who won that game, and we will be playing them on Saturday at 3:00 PM for the South Shore Championship. Right, South?
South Sectionals?
South Sectionals Championship.
Where will that game be located?
Norwell.
Norwell. Football has come to an end, but they play Thursday, Thanksgiving Day in the morning. I believe it's a 10:30 start. Patrick is down in the Hall of Fame meeting right now. I thought he would be down here as we were going through this. But we are still going to have the bonfire, and it will be on Tuesday that week. They're putting together, and I know that Patrick's working with the, a lot of the kids that play the sports, and they'll be working, doing a bunch of games for younger kids, so we're gonna start promoting this at the Mitchell and the Central School. Mr. Shea said he will support getting hot dogs again, so we'll be, everybody will get a free hot dog. It's free to come to. We'll announce the kids that played sports in the fall. Mr. Ponti, we usually try to bring the band out if we can. Mr. Condon will be here with his DJing. And they'll do a lot of things for the kids and have some games and-
Is that the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week?
Tuesday of Thanksgiving week.
It's the 26th.
We have a meeting that night.
Yes. But hopefully we'll have it out by the bonfire.
Do we know what time the bonfire is at?
Start it early. Tomorrow's, yes, tomorrow's Unified Soccer at 4:00 PM, and it is going to be a, I think it's a round robin, I think. Is it Thursday?
Oh, Thursday.
Thursday at 4:00. It's a round robin, right, with Abington and Westbridge or, no, whole- Carver and Abington?
Abington, yeah.
Yeah. They're coming here, though.
Yeah.
We're gonna have it here. Okay. I think we had a great fall season. You know, you go out there and you see a lot of kids participating. The band, the kids that do, that work with the band and the flags.
Color guard.
Color guard. I forgot. Sorry, went on me. To see as many kids as we're getting for the band, I'm very excited about that, because we've been really pushing that the last few years to come in, because I think that we do a great job of the music program down at Mitchell School, and some of the kids don't go into the band at the high school level, for whatever reason, because there's so much going on. But it's nice to see we have a student who plays football and then plays the drums in the band, so that's nice to see. We've got a great cheerleading squad, done a great job. They won state championships last year. This year, they're doing a great job out on the field with, they've been out there a couple of times. We've had some great senior nights with girls and boys soccer. I've seen out there field hockey. We had one, football. It's nice to see a community coming together for the athletic programs. As we go inside, now, as we start to go forward into the winter sports season, we're gonna see a lot more of the music program, because now we're gonna start to see the concerts, for the Christmas concerts down here at the Mitchell School, and we'll have one here at the high school. So a lot of things coming inside. Not only are athletic programs starting to boost and starts to blossom in the fall, but we also, now we're gonna start to see our drama club come forward going into the spring. We're gonna start to see more of the jazz and the band come up in the winter and the spring months. So it's, this is where we start to see a lot of activity around. We, I think I said it before, but I'm gonna say it again. We had a steam night at the Mitchell School. There was over 400 people there. It was probably the best-attended function that we have, that I have attended here in the district in my four-plus years. There were kids trying everything. It was an opportunity for parents to come out and see what, see what's going on in our steam program at the Mitchell School, and hopefully we can get that running up here at the high school sooner than later and have those type of opportunities. Tori Cameron's doing a terrific job down there. I know that Erin Fisher supports Tori in that room. I mean, she has so many different things going on, and I know our before and after care is helping out with that as well, and we're trying to get robotics into the before and after care and, and working on different types of steam and STEM activities. It just, I mean, Andrew, for 400 people that night, it was just terrific. And Tori just goes out and grabs people and says, "Get in here and you gotta wa-" I mean, everybody was there, from the fire chief down to, to me, you know. So, I mean, it was a lot of people, and just, it was a nice event. It was a great event, so please let her know that. As we come to a close, though, you know, cross-country did well, golf did well, tennis. I mean, we've got so many great things going on, and the sports season is now over for the fall. Now it beefs up for the winter sports, which brings me into those coaches' appointments right away, and I'll just go quickly through them. Rebecca Campbell, Assistant Girls Basketball Coach. Sarah Campbell, Head Girls Hockey Coach. Mitch Daly, Assistant Basketball Coach. Ryan Eaton, Head Girls Indoor Track. Matt Lewis, Assistant Boys Basketball Coach. Andrew McDonald, Head Girls Basketball Coach. George McCabe, Head Boys Indoor Track. Matthew Montero, Winter Cheerleading Coach. Abigail Pellegrino, Assistant Girls Indoor Track. Travis Pickle, Assistant Boys Indoor Track. Matthew Savage, Head Boys Basketball Coach. Sean Tarpe, Weight Room Coach, and Charles Woodman, Head Boys Hockey Coach. Pretty much everybody's back on that. And then I close out just to, and I, probably Ellen and Gordon can probably help me out on this. Last week, we, Gina and I, were able to go with Gordon and Ellen down to the MASSS/MASC joint conference. Lot of great, lot of great activities and small forums for us to go to. Great discussions that we, I have with my colleagues. I know that Ellen and I were talking, I think it was Saturday morning, about going to see the students present and some other things, but just talking to other school committee members and other school districts, it's nice to know that we're not alone. The schools are event-driven. That we may have some issues here, but so does everybody else, so don't think that we're on an island by ourselves. But it was nice, and I think that we learned a lot, just going and meeting people and listening to the, going into each of the forums.
I do, I feel that way. I greatly enjoyed it. I get a lot of satisfaction out of networking with other superintendents and school committee members.
The agenda, the format is, is well organized and is a cross-section of all kinds of subject matter that are presented in the workshops. I went to one on budget presentation and one on policy, which were both excellent. I learned a lot from those. Public speakers, keynote speakers, I thought were very good. This is Superintendent Legault and Ellen have mentioned, you know, the camaraderie or the conversation, the opportunity for conversation with other folks on other committees opens up other perspectives and helps a lot. I would tell you that I think our last meeting, we went through the resolutions, list of resolutions, that as a body, the MASC votes on to direct our conversation with legislators on areas that we think are key, important ones. I think there were nine resolutions, eight or nine, all of them passed. Always passionate, interesting discussion. You probably would be surprised, as I was, that there was a lot of discussion about whether we should ban styrofoam from our schools. But it's good to, good to have a discussion.
Next year, you go and you speak at the student forum.
Absolutely. And, yeah, good, good conversation around the others. But at the end of the day, everything that was on that list was voted on as passed and approved. But overall, it's my, I don't know, fourth time, we have been there, four times? Every time.
Yep.
Been valuable and happy to dedicate the time to go do that, so.
Yeah, and I, so actually, I talked to some other school committee members from other districts, and, you know, we're doing pretty good as a district. I mean, we're not, we're not the best, but we're also not the worst. And it was nice to see that, and it's, it's nice to see sometimes that we're not alone in the things that we have going on here. You know, I talked to some other members from school committees that also have issues with-
Diversity.
With diversity, yes, with, with all that. And so it was, I mean, it's not nice to hear, but it was nice to hear that we're not alone. We're not alone in it. And so, I mean, I'll be reaching out to them to see what exactly they're doing. So I enjoy it. I get a lot of satisfaction from going. My favorite, my favorite workshop was Saturday, when it was the Student Leaders Workshop that I went to. And I got, I was telling Kiara earlier, and I think I told Liz, the superintendent, I got to hear other school, other students, school committee members talk and talk about their experiences. And it was, it was interesting to hear what they had to say, and interesting to hear what other school committee members that have students on their committees had to say. So hopefully they'll have more of those types of workshops, you know, with other students and stuff. I think it would be beneficial for the students and for the school committee members, for the, you know.
Each year, Project 351 comes to the mass conference, and we, I think that's probably one of our highlights with the keynote speakers, one of the, the last morning that we're there, they bring a project. And just to hear the kids, like to hear what you have to say is, is better probably for everybody else in East Bridgewater to hear this evening than anything that I have to say this evening. So it's so important to hear your voice. And, you know, we sit there and listen to students talk and speak to us about what they're doing, and it's just amazing to hear what you're doing. So it's nice. It's refreshing. I think that's what Ellen and I, you know, you get out of this conference or our conference that we go to in the summer, to hear that our teachers are making a difference with igniting our student body into being activists or to just getting involved. It's just really important, and giving back, so.
Thank you.
I just had one thing at the end of the sports thing, because you mentioned band. And they've had their own set of competitions over the last four weekends. And congratulations to them. They placed in both the Southeast and state finals higher than they placed last. Their scores were high, because they don't do like this one wins, it's all stars, and it's a different process. But they scored higher in all categories in both the Southeast and the state finals than they did a year prior.
I haven't seen that yet. We haven't, usually Mr. Ponti just says something up, or Mr. Hatchfield sends something up, but I think it's-
Yeah, well, they've been straight out. I mean, they've had the last four weekends and-
I think they were getting on a bus-
Yes, they were.
Last weekend at 6:00 AM or something, or two weeks-
UMass Band Day.
Yeah.
5:00 AM.
Was it 5:00 AM?
Yeah.
I know it was, because I was with Mr. Ponti at the Ann Caneli Heinz Scholarship Dinner.
And if you've never seen that, I think there's a video maybe on the band app or something. Oh, my God. The entire UMass football field is just one sea of musicians and color guard people, and like, it's unbelievable to see. Like, there's not an ounce of space on that field. It's just full, and it's amazing.
That's great.
And, and, you know, the kids love it. It's a ton, the music parents do a ton of work, you know, pack and bag lunches and, you know, everything else to get them there.
Yeah, I think it's great.
But yeah, it's, they've been, and then they did the game Friday night and the parade yesterday.
Yeah, that's right. They did do the parade yesterday.
But, but the competitions have done really, really well this year.
I'll get the actual what they did, break it to the next one, next meeting.
And next up, we have, time has been scheduled to continue discussion regarding the request from Nate Rollins to name the Gordon W. Mitchell School Main Office in memory of Carol Power, a former administrative assistant. So the email that we received from Nate Rollins is, he says, "Good evening, Superintendent. My name is Nate Rollins, and I am a proud 2015 graduate of East Bridgewater High. However, my email is in regards to the middle school. For 30 years, Carol Power worked in the main office greeting students as they walked through the door. In 2014, prior to her arrival, Carol passed away. I was wondering what action I would need to take to have her name in the middle school office. A small gesture such as the Carol Power Main Office would really show how much she was appreciated. Best, Nate Rollins." And so that was the email. Teresa, do you still have the email or letter that Nathan had given to you?
I do not have that with me. I read it, I read it in the record the last time. But in effect, Nate talked so highly of Mrs. Powers. I didn't have the pleasure of knowing her, unfortunately. But you could not have imagined a better person, just in the way this, you know, 22, 23-year-old kid talked about somebody who made such an impact in his day-to-day life at the Mitchell School. And the fact that he would even reach out to do that, I think, is a testament to Mrs. Powers, to Powers' family, and to Nate for caring that much about it.
Thank you. So attached, we have file FF, naming new facilities. That is our-
Ellen, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we, okay, no, go ahead. I didn't know you were gonna read the policy.
Oh, no, I wasn't gonna read it, and hopefully you all have read it. I mean, I can read it if you want me to.
I just wanted to make a suggestion. I think it's a great proposal, and I know Mike and his partner are here. Thank you for coming. I think it's, it's very important to honor and remember people who have had such a positive, strong impact. I would like to recommend that perhaps, in light of everything that's happened recently around the video and, you know, the need to encourage kindness and acceptance in the community, perhaps instead of naming the main office after her, because I don't know as though her tenure in the main office was for her full-time here in the district, but perhaps a buddy bench or a memorial bench outside the main office or in the cafeteria. It doesn't have to necessarily be named Buddy Bench, but something in memorial of Carol Powers that is more tangible and more evident to kids to show love and share kindness.
That's a nice suggestion.
Certainly, I, I think from what Nate has told me about Mrs. Powers, and again, I didn't have a child at that school in the time that she was there, so I don't know her. That would be fitting to her, to her personality and her love of the students and the kindness she showed the students. And again, I, I think any memorial is always nice, and I would totally support that if it worked for Mr. Gentile.
Does Mike want to say anything?
Mr. Power or Mike, would you like to say anything?
Mike, talk.
You came all this way.
It's the only mic we have, I guess.
So, thank you to the administration and to the school committee for welcoming David and I here. If I may, I just want to first say something to Ms. Kiara, your newest student member. Kiara, congratulations.
Thank you.
The world needs you. I think that we're gonna be voting for you someday, so you can count two votes in from our home. But, you know, the earth needs you, the ocean needs you, the air needs you, and you are a breath of fresh air. And I, I don't know you, but I know your mom and dad, and I know how proud they are of you. So you are a future leader of America, so you carry that Viking torch with you, and we absolutely commend you. So I, I feel your energy from here, and I had to say thank you.
Thank you so much.
And congratulations. You're going to do well. I have zero doubt. So anyway, thank you to the committee. You know, we really just came to say thank you for anything that you could do. A wonderful, a surprising gesture to name the main office after my late mom came in from the community. And it was a big surprise, and it was a big honor. And what I can tell you about my mom is for 30 years, there was no day that was more happier for her than the next day that she could get to the middle school. She didn't consider it a job. She considered it an honor. She loved the students. She loved the teachers. She loved the administrators, and it was really her family. And so I'm very proud of her. She taught us hard work and sacrifice. And she didn't ask what could be done for her. She asked what could be done for the school and for others. So we really just came to say thank you. Whatever could be done, thank you to the community member, Mr. Rollins, who put forward the idea. We appreciate it. Whatever your board could consider, we're happy to partner with you and just say thank you. We would be honored.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, before you leave, you, you worked with us for a few years back.
Yes, lucky you.
And, I mean, I think that was a great gesture this evening. I think that's nice. I think you've been thinking about it. But I, a lot of times, you worked with us as a behavior specialist, worked with students at the Mitchell and at the high school. But there are many times, which I think that this Buddy Bench may be appropriate, I saw you sitting with kids-
Oh, thank you.
-and having conversations, or even a couple of times taking a walk outside with somebody. And when you read the letter that Mr. Rollins wrote, he said that there was, you know, I think he lost his phone, or he lost his-
Yep.
Play something.
His phone.
And your mother, and your mother waited and stayed and looked for it, looked for it, and helped him find it, and ended up the night, or ended up the afternoon by finding it and made him feel calmer. And I think that that's, I think your mother has instilled that in you-
Thank you.
-to work with children. And I think, I just think that's a nice thing where kids can sit together, or a teacher, or even Mr. Gentile can sit with somebody and to partner and be a buddy and to talk to somebody.
A cool-down moment is always good.
Yeah. I mean, it's your, it's your vote, but I think something like that's nice. It's just, knowing you and seeing what you've done with kids, and that's how I, I don't know your mom, but that's where I would see you, sitting with someone, talking with someone, buying someone an extra sandwich in the cafeteria. I think I saw that a couple of times, but you're a gentle soul, and I think, from what I understand, your mom was a gentle soul, and I think kids need gentle souls.
Well, thank you. That's very kind of you, Mr. Legault. And yeah, she really was. She was probably the kindest, most caring person I've ever met in my entire life, and she was always a protector. She was always looking out for other people. And truthfully, she honestly smiled every day. I never, in 30 years, I never heard my mom say one word of frustration. She was just happier than the next, as I said, to get to school. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. So I, I agree with Tristal. I think, you know, given where Mrs. Powers' work was so student-focused, and maybe naming the office after her is not really a great focal point for where the students are going to see her name and know anything about her, so maybe a Buddy Bench is a great place to recognize her work, whereas it's so student-focused and it's something the students would use. I like that idea.
I know when I looked at this on the agenda, great thought. My loss, because I didn't get to meet your mom or know anything about her, but I can certainly see her reflected through you. Great job. And I would put that aside just for a second, but what triggered for me in this process is that, hey, this is, this is a big thing for us as a committee to be organized around, because I'm sure your mom was one person. I'm sure that the list of people who have contributed to this school is just very impressive. Some I may have known, most I probably didn't. Some I may have known, most I probably didn't, but as a body, as a committee, whether we're sitting on it or whoever the next people are, I think there should be a, a format by which we consider situations like this, because you, you don't wanna do it frivolously, and I'm not saying that we would, and you wanna give everything due consideration, so I think organizing around that, making sure that we have at least a process that we consider and go through. One of the things that triggered for me too is to think about, I know when we built the school, there are hallways named after people, and I don't know what the process was to go through that. So, there, it probably should at least be a consistency, and, and I wasn't on the committee back then, so I don't know who made those decisions, but would make sense if it's, you know, John Doe hallway. Hey, hey, how did, how did they make that decision that it was John Doe and not the Gordon McKinnon hallway, which would be a good choice too?
I thought you were gonna say John Shea hallway.
No, 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 I didn't say that. He'd get his own auditorium. So, any event, so, so I, I don't, I think you open up a great opportunity for us to really consider recognizing folks such as your mom, and to do it in a, a fair and organized process. So, I'm all for working on that, considering that. I think something such as the Buddy Bench, that's, I don't wanna say easier, but it's simpler, because it's, you know, a piece of furniture, and it's gonna have somebody's name on it, which is fine. But, you know, whether that's donated, or whether we raise money for it, or whether we pay for it on a budget, you know, I'm not sure.
Gordon, I just wanna, let me ask Dr. Williams, I was just gonna say, she wasn't part of the book building committee. However, this is what happens when a building goes down, the old high school. The gym, am I correct? Something was named that we did not bring it down here.
So, I believe the hallways are all named for rooms and spaces in the former buildings. So, the gymnasium, the auditorium, so if there were spaces in the old building named in memorial of someone, it was then renamed as, as a hallway.
Okay, that, that, okay. That makes sense. But I guess it then begs the question is, how did they get named over there? You know, so, is there, what was that process?
But I guess, and, and what I'm alluding to too, that there is gonna be some names that we probably forgot at the, the old high school that never made it down here for whatever reason. And I believe the auditorium was named something else at the, the high school, then we came down and renamed it. Was it Maury?
Yeah, McCarthy.
McCarthy. So, I'm just-
You know, if I may, I mean, I think the general public would kind of understand that these things are always evolving. As time goes on and new faces, new bodies come into districts we recognize in certain ways. My grandmother had the guidance wing of Danvers High School named after her after she passed, which was a great honor for our family, and we were thrilled with it, and then five years later, they tore down the high school. And they, they didn't name any part of the new high school after her, which we were fine with. She got her recognition. She got her moment in the sun, and we were, we were so honored. And, you know, we have that in West Bridgewater now, where we're kinda talking about new schools, and we have a school that's named after someone who lived in the eighteen hundreds in West Bridgewater. Would that name necessarily come forward to the new school? Well, there's other new people that have come forward and contributed, so, I mean, I just, you know, that's neither here nor there, but I just think, you know, the, the gesture is really sweet and nice and student-focused, and it sounds like that's what your mom's work was really focused on, is being with the kids. And I think that's an important thing to recognize.
Along the idea, I know that there's starting form of Athletic Hall of Fame. Again, another thought, which I guess I have a lot of time on my hands, another thought triggered for me is that, wouldn't it be great to have a Hall of Fame for people such as Mrs. Powers, who have contributed, you know, to the, to the betterment of our schools, to the community of our schools, have a, have that kind of Hall of Fame, and probably even have an Academic Hall of Fame.
There is a plaque outside the main office at the middle school. But it doesn't, based on what's been shared of Mrs. Powers, it seems kind of trite to just put her name on a plaque. I mean, not to diminish those people's names on the plaque at the middle school either, but it just sounds like she was such a force of kindness and love, and at a middle school, how much more fitting to draw attention and memory to someone who was just pure kindness, it sounds.
Well, whatever, whatever the avenue we would choose, I, I would always be an advocate to, whether it's a plaque, whether it's a room, or whatever, that somewhere, somehow, it's gotta be documented as to who that person was and what did they contribute. And just having a name, Mrs. Powers, above a doorway is crazy. That's, unless there's a story that people could stop and read and go, "Oh, wow, what a great, what a great person." You know, that, to me, is, that's what you wanna pass on to people, talk about, you know, making a difference and, and, you know, contributing to, to the world around them. To have the rest of that story, in addition to just the name. I, I would think whether it's a bench, or room, or whatever, that somehow, some way, in that vicinity is, oh, by the way, and this is who this person was, when they were here, what they did, what their role was. I think that makes sense, rather than just the name somewhere, but that's just my thought. So, I guess, to me, it's just more indication that we should probably have some more conversation around it and move in a direction that gives us that opportunity to recognize people who have contributed on a, on a grand scale to who we are today.
And, and having talked to Nate, Trista, I think Nate would, I don't know if he's worked with Nate. He's a producer for WHG, so I think he's probably doing the news right now, but I think he would be thrilled. Because I, I said, "Well, what are you thinking of?" You know, like, "Give me an, give me an idea." And he was like, "I, I just wanna recognize." And I think to have that recognition tied to who she was as a person is even better than, you know, a name on a wall, you know? And, and so, I, I think that's phenomenal. I think, I thank you for thinking of it, just.
Just kind of, I, I would like to propose an idea that separate, you know, we're talking about two separate things here right now, and I think we'd like to move on in action for Miss Power, but also, I'd be more than willing to work with whoever would be appropriate in the district to create a protocol for naming buildings, objects in those buildings going forward. I don't know, it would be John would be the appropriate person to work with, or-
So, we, we actually have a policy subcommittee.
Okay.
And, I don't know what's in, what is it saying?
Protocol and policy being two different things, though. I mean, I don't know that we need to amend the policy, just-
Might need to amend the policy, because if we're all gonna be voting on it, we probably want to have some kind of criteria to base our decision on. We probably do have to.
But, I mean-
I guess, for instance, I think we all kinda like the idea of maybe a Buddy Bench. But then there's the practical aspect of, okay, who pays for it, so I certainly would be happy to contribute to the cost of it, myself personally, so maybe that's a way to say, hey, if a Buddy Bench was presented, we would accept it and place it in, in the appropriate location in the school, whatever Superintendent thinks is appropriate. I'd certainly, you know, make that motion to, to accept a gift on behalf of Mrs. Powers and the school. I would make that motion, if that makes sense to anybody.
What's your motion?
My motion to accept a gift to the school in honor of Mrs. Powers.
I would like to make motion that we, I feel very strongly that the best representation would be something like a Buddy Bench. So, I don't know. I know there's a little push and pull here around developing the policy and the protocol, and I don't, there's importance to that, because you're right, there will be other opportunities. I want something, someone recognized for an accomplishment within the district. But I just think in this particular instance, a Buddy Bench is the perfect way to recognize someone who was, it sounds like she was a force of kindness.
Well, so, I didn't get a second on my motion, so you wanna make a motion, that motion, and see if it gets seconded. We can talk about it.
Can we hear from the district, like, where we're gonna put it?
I don't know if you need a motion to have a Buddy Bench. I think what you need a motion on is to go forward with the subcommittee to get a policy in place on how you would-
Oh, we could just make it happen.
entertain this again. I think the Buddy Bench for the Mitchell School is something that, you know, that we would embrace down there, Andrew. I mean, don't you think? I mean, we need that. There are times that kids need to sit there, and there's times that teachers need to sit there. There's times that administrators need to sit there and think for a minute. And I think that, it's true. I, I don't know if we need a motion on the Buddy Bench. I don't think we had one when we put one in over at Central School.
Well, I think the motion that we need is-
It's more on your subcommittee.
-in honor of, of Mrs. Powers. I would happily make that motion.
So, when we, at the other school, when we had the Lapine, when they put in the Buddy Bench for that, and then this, the Craven one over at the Central School, we did, we ended up voting on those.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I think the motion is more to-
Is the naming of it.
Is the naming of the Buddy Bench. I'm happy to make that motion, because it sounds like we're gonna get a Buddy Bench. I mean, it sounds like we need a Buddy Bench at the Mitchell School, so.
Yeah, please.
Please do, Andrew. They'll decide about that.
Real quickly, just with regard to Carol Power, she was an amazing person. I was fortunate enough to have had an opportunity to work with her. She was a dedicated, caring person that really, in, in my time in East Bridgewater and having worked in other districts, definitely an individual who stands out to me. And unfortunately, when she passed, it was very unexpected and, and, you know, quick, and it was really, it had a huge impact on the whole school community, including the students, obviously. In the time that I've been in East Bridgewater, this is the only instance that anyone has ever come forward and said, "Hey, we should think about honoring this person on a personal level," and I am, you know, the school is a second home to me. But that being said, I'm not a resident of East Bridgewater, so I don't feel it's, it's my place to make the decision. But, you know, for my two cents, I would absolutely support honoring Carol. I think the idea of a bench coupled with an explanation of who she was, that's also on display, so that people really understand that when they do take that moment, maybe to sit down, or we sit down with a student to talk about something, for them to understand, you know, where it came from. And I think that that certainly would be an opportunity to embody Carol as a person. She was, again, an amazing woman. You know, Michael is, is a, a perfect example of, you know, who Carol was, just in terms of his kindness and compassion and caring about kids. That was, that was Carol on a daily basis. And to a certain extent, she was like my work mom, too. So, with regard to, you know, making this come to fruition, I certainly think, you know, with the support of the, of the school committee, with regard to the naming, I think we could certainly work with the Superintendent's Office, as well as our school council, to make sure that, you know, we take the, the blessing of the school committee and then carry that forward into bringing something to the school and really making it a, a tribute to Carol. I think, you know, I'd like to have a little bit of time, you know, with regard to things like, where is it gonna go? And what's it gonna look like? And what's the write-up gonna look like? Those are things I would wanna make sure we have time to plan for, because it's that important, and would wanna make sure that it was done well.
Thank you.
Definitely would do everything and anything to, to make it happen.
Thank you for clarity.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the vote is on the naming, not just on the Buddy Bench.
Yeah.
On the acceptance that we're going to, excuse me-
Honor her.
On the acceptance, we're going to accept the idea that there will be a gift, and that we will use it to honor your, your mom. I, I hear is terrific, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, I think the motion is to approve-
The school committee to get involved into the specifics of it, to me, is not-
I see you're trying to say something.
Oh.
Oh, no, I just, I'm sorry. So, on the notion of a gift, if you need, if you need to receive a gift, we're only happy to provide a gift. I, I was wrong, I would say.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Rob.
That's okay. I was looking at Gordon, 'cause he said he was gonna chip in. I was thinking I was gonna chip in, too, but-
I'm happy to do it.
Gordon's motion.
I guess we're back to your motion, Gordon.
I think we, I think we're back to Gordon's motion.
Go ahead, we wanna hear your motion again.
I think you nailed it.
Advised me is how you want to craft the motion. I'm happy to make it.
Please repeat.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, Teresa can make it, go ahead.
I would, I would make a motion to the school committee to approve honoring Carol Powers in a way that emulates her kindness at the Mitchell School, to be guided by the Superintendent's Office and Mr. Gentile.
Second.
And then I guess I can further it, or we can go to the second motion, which is to formalize this for the policy subcommittee at some point. I mean, how we go forward.
Well, that thought. Mrs. Bennett, did you get that motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, the motion by Teresa and seconded by, who, somebody seconded it. Tim seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I would like to say I'm abstaining, not that I'm in favor of it, because I am in favor of it, but I'm abstaining because Mike is, Mr. Power is a very close friend of mine, and I don't wanna vote either way on it, although I am in favor of it. It's a conflict of interest for me, and I'm not, I'm abstaining from this vote. So, I hope that you can understand that. So, that was one abstention and five in favor.
And Mike, I, I will say, in, I've had multiple conversations with Nate, and it's been a real pleasure for me to get to know your mom, 'cause I've known you for now five years, and I can see why you're the amazing man that you are.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
I was gonna say, thank you for coming out.
All the way from Michigan.
Yes, from Cleveland.
And, and Steve travels back?
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
And a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you.
And stay in touch. We will, we will send pitches and invite you to the dedication. How's that?
Oh, that's a definite.
Thank you.
And so, the policy subcommittee will-
I'm good at that stuff.
We will, we will be reviewing this policy, File FF.
I was just saying that it doesn't, I mean, the policy necessarily wouldn't have to change, just, you know, there's nothing in the policy about how you go about choosing. That's a procedural issue. So, I don't even know if the policy would need to be revised, to come up with a protocol that we wouldn't, I mean, we could vote on.
This is only the third time, right, since you've been here, Liz, that we've had to name any?
They still need something to, like, follow to vote on.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't come up very often.
Right, but it, but to me, the, the bigger issue is, if, if you have a structure to it, it honors the people who have, it, this-
Oh, no, I, I don't disagree. It just comes up so rarely.
Most of the time, it's usually, unfortunately-
Right.
-it's when someone passes, and they come, and they say, you know, they've done something for the school, or, you know, Tony Lapine's daughter, you have a monument down there. We have Mrs. Craven's, the Sidney Craven Bench.
Yeah, so those were specifically donated by an outside source.
Right.
And it, and it can be something as simple where you have, you know, two or three designated people in the district that weigh the, the, you know, contribution of that person. I mean, not that I ever think you would, but you could have someone come in and say, you know, "My mom taught for three years at the Central School. Can we name," you know? Well, that contribution doesn't, is kind of outweighed by some things other people did. And so, that group could just kind of weigh their contribution, decide an appropriate way to recognize that person and make a recommendation to the school.
And, you know, with all of the social, emotional issues that we do have, children with anxiousness and angst, the PTA, the PTOs could probably support, or will probably support, something like this, or, you know, drama always does something nice. They always give back. Our Boosters Club has been, been giving back to the, the athletics. I mean, it's, we have a great community, and when it comes to these types of things, they always come forward and help out. And I know that Gordon's gonna help out on this, so.
Happy to help.
Thank you, Gordon.
Glad I wasn't around when they were drafting the Constitution.
Next up, we have Mrs. Erin Fisher here to talk about Strategic Plan Number Four Technology. Welcome.
Where, who do you want me to go? Thanks. I always use my phone, so, but I'll go over there, 'cause there we go.
Why do you want to?
Yeah, I'm a junior.
Let me do something else.
Um, thank you.
Oh, did you even know?
Um, which is technology integration. Um, so kicking off the year, I am the district-wide technology integrator for K, pre-K to 12, and, um, our beginning of year is focused a lot on really kind of getting up and running and doing all of our logins and setup, getting all of our curriculum supports in place, our online licenses, and a lot of our programs that our students use. Um, we also implemented, I'm also the UDL coach at the high school, and we started this year, Megan McGovern and I, a monthly UDL newsletter. That started off this year. Um, I'm regularly in teachers' classrooms and I put a little image of my calendar. This is what my calendar typically looks like, and I normally, in the month of September, don't take a lunch. I just run from classroom to classroom, and I'm happy to do so, um, working with teachers and kids, and it's amazing. Um, I went to STEM Week training out in Worcester to bring back STEM kits, um, for our Mitchell School. The focus was on zero emissions. So it was a project centered around zero emissions, and, um, we got all solar kits, and we brought those back to fourth grade to use later in the year when they, um, cover that in their, their standards with electricity and solar, solar power. Um, Tori Cameron, as Mrs. Lego mentioned, Miss Lego mentioned, did STEAM Night. It was an amazing event. I was like her bridesmaid for it. Um, it was her event, a hundred percent, and I said whatever you need me to do. So I helped her make signs and I helped her make, um, QR codes and whatever she needed. I helped her out. It was an amazing night. I brought my own children. Um, it was, it was really, really well done, and kudos to her because she is absolutely amazing, and she's my friend. Um, I did PLCs at the Mitchell School in September focusing on accessibility and how we can put various accessibility tools on our Chromebooks to have text read to kids, translated for kids, speech to text, and text to speech in place. Um, it was great, great PLCs. In October, we went to MasQ. Uh, we brought twenty staff members. We had seven staff members present, which is a record number for us, and two of our staff members, Tori Cameron, again, um, she's the social media ambassador year-long for MasQ now, which is Massachusetts Computer Using Educators, very large statewide organization. Um, and she was the boss of the conference social media ambassadors, which Beth, our own Beth Barra was a social media ambassador for the MasQ event, and she's also a fourth grade teacher, and did a session on, um, how to use social media in your classroom to engage, you know, parents and students. Um, our greatest takeaway with our group was immediate implementation of some of the workshops they attended. Taylor Almeida, who is a teacher over at Central School, she attended a session on digital breakouts, and the next day she was sending me a digital breakout she made and implemented in her second grade class, and she had me come in and observe it, and it was absolutely amazing. From there, her sharing with me, I made one for our seventh grade math teacher upstairs, um, and the seventh graders are doing this digital breakout, which is a, a whole lot of fun and, uh, is very engaging with the math or whatever concept is in there. Um, it gave us a lot of perspective. All the teachers that attended, when we were at lunch, they'll sit back and they say things like, wow, I can't believe we have all of this where we do. So it does give them such a sense of, um, like pride in where we are and where our students are at. We, they do a great job, the staff here, with tech integration, and I'm just so honored to be a part of it. Uh, and now we're doing so well, especially our seven that presented, that we're starting some cross-district collaborations. Um, some of our staff were observed by Allison Mellow, who's the assistant superintendent in Foxborough. She was so impressed with, um, two of our presenters, Meg McGovern and Stacy Linehan, that she personally contacted Dr. Williams and asked if we would come to Foxborough, both, um, Mrs. McGovern, Stacy Linehan, and Sherry Craven and myself from our session. Um, and she really wanted what we had to say about UDL and choice and tech integration to be carried over to her staff, as well as, um, CCONC Public Schools also asked Mrs. Ronane, who presented at MasQ, Mrs. Linehan, and myself to come to CCONC's, um, PD Day and present to them as well. So it's, it's been nice relationships we've been forming with these other districts because then they come here and present to our staff on, on our March PD Day. So it's been a great opportunity, and it's a great opportunity for our own staff here to, they're amazing, and then to also have that compliment from other districts really gives them a little pep in their step. And this is what's coming up next. So, um, in March, we're going to do a choose your own adventure PD Day. We're in the process PD Academy and, um, our MasQ group of kind of looking at the different workshops. I just ran PLCs, um, in, for reading resources at the Mitchell School, and I'll be running one, um, later in the month or early December on EdPuzzle, which is a really neat video tool. Still classroom visits and appointments every day. I've been in, um, sixth grade, I was just in this week, looking at EdPuzzle. I've been at Central School looking at Seesaw. Tori Cameron and I collaborated together and created a steam cart. Um, she trained me on some of the robotics on that steam cart, and teachers can sign it out. So we're doing that this month. Heather Falowekter signed it out, as well as Beth Barra. We'll be doing robotics in their classroom connected to verbs and nouns, which is really cool. I was in sixth grade today doing stop-motion animation with the digestive track in the Chromebooks. Mr. Sylvia and I met. I went to a meeting in Norton on their esports team. Um, we talked about that, presented at the faculty meeting, and just had a staff member come forward, um, that may spearhead an esports club. We also, uh, Pearl Liz, she sent me an email about Flickwish, which is a nonprofit. It's a dad and son who have a, uh, podcast channel on movie trivia, and they sponsor, they a one-hundred percent sponsor it, um, a movie trivia tournament, and the finals are at Fenway, and it's first come, first served. So luckily you sent that, and East Bridgewater scooped it right up, and so we get to be one of the teams that gets to go to the finals because it's, um, and Boston is going to be one of the other teams. So, um, Mr. Sylvia and I are gonna be spearheading that. We're excited to do the movie trivia, so we'll talk more about that after the holidays. We have a new board coming over to the middle school, just to check it out. It's called a touch view board. It's an interactive panel. That's on Thursday. And then, as I said before, we had the CCONC PD Day and the Foxborough PD Day that we are attending. And that's all of tech integration.
Very good.
Thank you.
I think that's the fastest you've ever done it, Erin.
Erin, I just wanna mention, Mr. Sylvia's name was not mentioned going to Fenway.
Oh.
I thought it was me going to.
Me and you are going to Fenway.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, then you're not going to Fenway, are you?
There's a dart to the neck.
Maybe against, against Redstone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Any questions?
Good job.
What is this last page? Slide Mania Free Themes and Templates for Google Slides?
Oh, that's just the, uh, see this cool background on there?
Oh.
That does, it provides tons of free backgrounds.
Wow.
Copyright free, like we
That's good to know.
We just have to mention, I'm in presentation.
One thing I wanna mention, one thing I wanna mention about MasQ, you, you can't walk around with Erin Fisher without someone grabbing her or saying to me how lucky we are to have her. And she has great ideas, but she doesn't just put the idea out there. She really works with it. She tries to get teachers to work with her and to try different things in the classroom. Um, you know, we have a teacher down at, uh, who will be retiring this year and is probably one of your best tutor
She's who I was with this week, and come teach me something new. So she's learning something new.
All the time. And she's retiring in June because she wants to be, uh, better in the classroom and wants to really ignite that feeling of, I can do this, you know, and have a really great blended learning. But Erin, you've done a great job. I mean, we had twenty people at MasQ. I went and watched, uh, a couple of the, um, PDs that they gave. They were awesome. Our teachers were just terrific there, and I can, I can tell you, I was in with Allison from Foxborough, um, and Meg, um, and
Stacy.
Stacy Linehan. They were fantastic, and people saw them, and they were, they couldn't get enough of them at the end. So I'm proud of them. Um, it's proud to lead a district that has so many people that are innovative and wanna be part of the solution, um, going forward.
You know, just real quick, I wanna put Tim on the spot because he just whispered something to me when we were talking about MasQ.
Oh, boy, was this going.
Yeah.
Oh, I just said, I think MasQ is the most, the most exciting two days of the year. I mean, I, I come back with, spent a hundred thousand dollars of our district's budget in my head, coming back every time, and I love it. So I love it.
And all I can think of is the most, two, the two most fun days of the year and are the best people that we have, being stars and that. I, I just think that's a pretty great thing. We should say it out loud.
Yep, it is. It's great. We know that Erin's brought back a couple of vendors for us so that we have to look at. So when you say you've, you spent it in your head of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, Erin's just bringing back vendors for John and I and, uh, Dr. Williams. I saw her talking to them down at, uh, last week's conference, John, so don't say it was me. Okers jumped right on Dr. Williams' back. So, oh, we're coming in next week. Look at her. She's like, ah, from Okers. He's very excited.
The other piece, if I can mention, Mr. Sylvia and I were in a meeting this afternoon with Bridgewater State as our monthly professional partnership, um, and we always talk about how we can reciprocate with what we can do for them, what they can do for us. Uh, and the last couple of weeks, we've talked a lot about how they can help support us. It did come up today. Um, they are looking for Mrs. Fisher to help support them with their practicing educators, uh, to get them up to snuff on technology integration in the classroom. Um, so we will be looking to bring you back into that.
It's nice.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have a report from Dr. Williams. This is Be Smart Parent Presentation and also an update on the November first, two thousand nineteen Faculty and Staff Professional Development Day.
Great. Thank you. Um, one of the parts of my job that I enjoy most is really just taking people's ideas and, and bringing them forward. So, uh, the Be Smart, uh, presentation that will be coming up December twelfth was an idea that was brought to me by a faculty member who is part of the Moms Demand Action Group. Um, it was an organization started by a mom, um, whose young son lost his life to an accidental, um, shooting inside a home when a homeowner's gun misfired. Um, and so they go around, and it's not an anti-gun group, it's a responsive gun-owning, um, campaign. Uh, and it's really for people who own guns as well as people who don't own guns, and, and just training, uh, parents to, uh, be aware of, uh, if your child is going to another home, uh, making sure that if they are gun owners, they are responsible, have those, um, protections in place, uh, so that there is no, uh, more accidents that may occur. So they are coming to present on December twelfth, uh, right here in the junior senior high school at seven PM. Um, we have partnered with the East Bridgewater Police Department because certainly, um, it's important to them as well that we have responsible gun owners, making sure, uh, guns are, are safe and away from the hands of, of children. Um, so we're excited to bring this opportunity. This was Julia Sheehan's idea. She is part of the organization, uh, and we're happy to sponsor it, um, for our community as well. So that will be happening December twelfth. The other, uh, update is really, um, for the professional development day that just occurred, um, on November first. I have included for you the overview of the offerings that were provided. It was, the theme was all around, um, health, uh, both mental and physical health and wellness, uh, and it was really a menu approach for staff to choose for breakout sessions. Um, our hope was that they chose a combination of mental health as well as physical health. Um, but one of the biggest, uh, takeaways that we were hoping, um, went through for staff was it's just as important for them to be, uh, mindful of their own personal, uh, health needs because they can only be, um, best for their students if they're taking care of themselves. So there were offerings for them for self-care as well as how they can best support, um, the social, emotional, and, and physical wellness of their students. Uh, some of the outsory, outside sources, um, that came were funded through the Kyle Cares Organization. I met, again, uh, through a staff member. I met Jim Johnson, um, through Evan Dean. Um, uh, the Johnsons are from North Attleboro, where Mr. Dean grow up, grew up. He introduced me to Mr. Johnson. Their organization is in memory of their son, Kyle, uh, who took his life to suicide, uh, almost two years ago. Um, and so he shared with the staff really, uh, the story of his son and who he was. And it was really, you know, letting the staff know that this was a, a student who was always smiling, always surrounded by friends, and, and athlete, um, a really unassuming, uh, person that anyone would think that they were struggling with mental health issues. And this was the message we really wanted to get across to staff, that there are going to be students that it'll be obvious because they'll express to us their needs. Uh, but certainly we'll have students that, um, on the surface don't present as having any, uh, challenges with mental health. So we have to always be aware that at any point in time, we could have a student, even if they're presenting, um, as not needing assistance and supports, uh, we always have to be aware that that need could be underlined. So Mr. Johnson spoke to the staff, um, and certainly we appreciated his financial support so that we could bring these trainings to staff as well. Uh, and I was glad to see that we had an enterprise reporter there. Um, so, um, I included that article for you as well. Uh, the takeaways from staff, you know, they were really appreciative of the opportunity to focus on not only their own personal health and wellness, but to learn a little bit more about how to better support the needs of their students. Uh, and what was great for us is, you know, we did have some outside, uh, presenters, but we had a lot of staff in the district that have expertise and specialties that they could share, uh, with their colleagues, which was wonderful to see. So that was a little recap of, uh, November first. As Erin mentioned, uh, coming up in March, our other full day, our full day professional developments, we want them to be, uh, broadened themes so that they can take into account the needs of our staff pre-K to twelve. Our half-days are specifically focused, uh, on curriculum so that they're working building-based, um, refining their, their content knowledge. So this was really a pedagogy day, uh, for staff so that they can better address, uh, the needs of their students, so that students can attend to the academics that, uh, we want them to be focused on if we're taking care of, uh, their social, emotional needs.
Do you have any questions?
Yep.
Um, the foundation Kyle Cares, do they also do parent presentations, or is it more geared towards educators?
So they don't actually do any presentations, uh, but they will fund. So their, uh, primary focus is with college students and high school students. Um, and when I spoke to Mr. Johnson about saying some words to the staff, um, he had said, oh, I've never really given a keynote before, but their organization is fairly new. Um, so I know they are broadening. Uh, right now, their efforts have been with Samaritans, um, Active Minds, Minding Your Mind, um, and a lot of it is geared to the professional development so that it can get to the hands of students. Uh, but he said every day they're looking to, uh, broaden that. So, um, their site may have more information about, uh, other types of offerings, but certainly, you know, we continue to, uh, talk with them and we're gonna continue that partnership. So, um, I would like to see us be able to expand some of the offerings. I think a lot of the things that we offer to staff would have been extremely beneficial for parents to take advantage of as well. So, um, that's one thing that we wanna continue to maybe have some parent, uh, presentations and offerings.
So I'm just thinking, I know in years past in town meetings when we've talked about, you know, we need another adjustment counselor or how important, you know, students' mental health is, you know, there's still that, I don't wanna use the word stigma, but there's that, um, you know, thought that, well, this shouldn't be addressed or doesn't need to be handled by the school, or why are we putting our resources here? And I think to the point that, you know, there's no particular face associated with a lot of the challenges of today's youth. It's not because of their home background or what have you. I think if there's a better understanding that this can potentially affect anyone, you know, like, like you said, their son, you know, no one would have guessed or known. And I think if we can continue to educate even at the community level, you know, it just makes us better understanding why these resources are needed.
And, and that was something that Mr. Johnson, you know, articulated with the staff that he, the removal of the stigma. Um, and, you know, when he even, uh, mentioned to, um, the staff that day that, uh, you know, students, um, seem to have a less difficult time talking about it, it's the adults. Um, so I think they would be more than, than willing to partner with us in giving opportunities for members of the community to partake in, uh, some of the, the speak, the speeches and presentations.
Especially the, um, the hidden in plain site. You know, that, that's like so eye-opening for parents to, to realize.
Yeah, so the hidden in plain site
That's a, I don't know.
Yeah, so that was that day as well.
Yeah.
Right, so, uh, that was Falmouth that had brought their mobile, uh, unit up. However, EB Hope is in the process of, um, securing, um, and I think they do have a donor for their own trailer, and they will be creating their own hidden in plain site, uh, for East Bridgewater. So certainly we would have access to that, uh, more redable, uh, more redable once they have created that. And I think, uh, talking to Susan Silva last week, uh, she said it would just be a matter of probably a, a few weeks for them to have, um, it completed here in the district. So we had it at a couple of parent conferences, um, but I think it was a little distracting because certainly parents were at conferences for a specific reason, whereas if we had it, uh, set up for an evening event, uh, specifically around, um, you know, the topic of, of health and wellness, um, because even staff members who went through the hidden in plain site were just astounded. Because even staff members who went through the hidden in plain site were just astounded by some of the things they saw. Right, and they're broadening. It used to always be around substance use, but now it's also, they're incorporating into it some of the clues and things that you might see that would alert you to mental health.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I didn't think it was just tied to.
Yeah, it has expanded. Initially it was with substance use, but now it has expanded into mental health.
I mean, that's huge, I think, for a parent. And for the community to see, to see how normal, and I use that word very, very loosely, things can appear when there's trouble brewing underneath.
Mr. Shea. So moving on to the next thing, sorry. I know you just took a drink of water.
You got the principals.
I know. Well, I could either, I think Mr. Sylvia is going to be a little, he's going to be like the, I don't, not Mr. Gentile. But I think Mr. Shea is going to be really quick. So I could, you sure?
He's fine. He's great.
He has to be, yeah, they don't, so.
We're here all night. Thank you for thinking about.
You're welcome. Apparently I'm the only one who does. Just kidding, it's a joke. Okay, so next up I have, well, I don't see Mrs. Burn.
Mrs. Burn is not here this evening. She is, she was on sick leave for a little bit. She is back. She was going to try to come here this evening, but she felt it would be best that she didn't because she is saving her strength. But she has been in school, she's back with the kids, and that's where we need her every day. She just wanted me to let you know that your book will be here tomorrow. It'll be in your mailboxes. And the whole year-long theme is on responsibility, so. Got that?
Oh, is this the second?
Now every time you hear responsibility, it's going to beep beep. So.
This is the second book in the year, right?
But she said it'll be here tomorrow. She just wanted me to mention that to you.
We wish her well.
We'll be rushing to our mailbox.
I have Mr. Gentile with the Gordon W. Mitchell School. I have to.
You can sit over there next to those two.
Welcome.
Thank you. Glad to see you all. Just a couple of updates and a few things that I want to highlight going on at the Mitchell School. To just follow up on comments that were already made about Steam Night, it was incredible. The one thing that wasn't mentioned that I do want to point out is in addition to the work that Mrs. Cameron did to organize it and make it come to fruition, she also involved many community organizations, community businesses, you know, from, we had a gentleman who is a scientist that has a student that goes to our school that came in and ran a booth that was very interactive with students. We had representatives from the Christmas tree farm down the road that were there. So, I mean, it was a really nice array of different people. It was very community-based. And outside of parent conferences, it was easily the most well-attended evening event that I've been involved with since I've come to East Bridgewater. So that's really a tribute to Mrs. Cameron's work and just the organization and getting people involved and excited about Steam. So thank you to her and for everyone that was involved with that. Last week at the Mitchell School, we had Rachel's Challenge presentations for our students. And it has been four years since we had Rachel's Challenge at the Mitchell School. Outstanding program, one that leaves a lasting impression. From the Rachel's Challenge presentation, we have a group, Friends of Rachel, which we've kind of adopted our own name for, which is the KC Club Kindness and Compassion. It involves all students, it involves all homerooms, and it really is meant to keep the theme from Rachel's Challenge, which is kindness and compassion alive and well throughout the year with different events and activities that they organize. So that was a great opportunity for us to be able to bring it back. Thank you to the PTA who made a big contribution to that program as well as thank you to Mrs. Dupre and Mrs. Callender who organized that for our school. We are nearing the end of Term One. Report cards will come home for Mitchell School students on December 3rd. We do print report cards. We post progress reports to the portal, but we print the report cards. Personally speaking, I think it's an important opportunity for a child to have that document and to share that and review it with their parents. And so parents can expect to see those on December 3rd. We have conferences December 4th through 6th. Great opportunity for teachers and parents to continue what I hope is communication that's already ongoing, but a great opportunity to sit down with your child's teacher and to be able to have an individual discussion about how he or she is doing and, you know, things to look forward to over the rest of the school year. Teachers currently are reviewing MCAS information and we're doing that both at the classroom level, grade level, as well as the school level, trying to look at things that we're doing well, areas that we need to improve, and how we can do that. Teachers are very vested in the process. It's one that we have undertaken every year and try to get better at. We try to look at the results and, you know, learn from that and turn that into actions that we can help to continue our students to grow and to achieve, you know, the great things that they've been able to do. Also along those same lines, our teachers are currently in the process of some curriculum work. Our focus this year will be on creating scope and sequence documents to guide our math and science teachers. Those are programs that are already established that we have reviewed and we now have in place at the Mitchell School. So we're looking to couple that with some curriculum documents that will be helpful for teachers. You know, as we evaluate areas that we're showing strengths in and areas that we need to develop, we'll have those documents to help guide any changes we may need to make or to evaluate why things are going well and try and apply that in other areas. Lastly, I just want to point out, along the lines of social, emotional learning, one of the things our guidance counselors are currently involved with is they have shared a survey with the grade-level teachers on executive functioning skills and asked for teachers to reflect on those skills as they relate to their current students. And it's looking at a number of different things from being able to start a task and see it through to completion, students being able to maintain attention in the classroom, organization skills, all sorts of different executive functioning skills. And the teachers are completing that survey so that the guidance counselors can then go into classrooms and deliver grade-level lessons so that every student in a particular grade level will get a lesson or more from the guidance counselors in the particular area that teachers have identified as a need at that grade level. So right now, it's in the early stages where they're collecting all the data. They'll then generate some lesson plans, which they will then deliver to the students between December and February of this year. And after they've done so, they'll then look at another lesson to work with our students around social, emotional learning for the second half of the school year. So that's a new thing that our guidance counselors have taken on and they're doing really great work with it. And I'm excited about the opportunity for kids to have access to their guidance counselors in a different way because they do have a lot to offer and I'm happy to see them working with all students, so.
Andrew, first of all, I think that's absolutely amazing. And kudos to Mrs. Callender and Mr. Dickey because you know that's a big push of mine. Don't it, since I was a parent in your school? I was talking to my brother-in-law over the weekend on Veterans Day, for Veterans Day. And one of the things he was telling me about, his son is in a private middle school in Maryland. And one of the things that is kind of core to their program is the teaching of organizational skills, study, the things you were talking about. And I guess I just throw this out there as an idea of if at some point we could look at entrenching that into some of our curriculum through a special or a smaller program. Because that's, that's one of the things I, as I talk to kids, I find a lot of them don't know what works for them in terms of how to study. And that's where they fall apart, including my own kid, to be honest with you. And I've talked to a lot of kids about it. It, because like I know what works for me, or did work for me when I was a student, does not work for my child in any size, shape, or form. And talking to him and hearing that it was kind of embedded in their curriculum somehow, I just thought it was interesting and if it was something that, because you kind of started down that road with what you're doing now, if eventually we could get to embedding that into our curriculum at the lower, you know, at the Mitchell School level so that they have it when they get to the junior senior. And they're obviously carrying it forward to some degree. I mean, it's obviously not something we'd do this year, you know what I mean? But just something to think about as.
And I would say, in my experience, I have found that teaching those things in isolation is not necessarily as effective as an expectation that those skills are taught within the context of a given classroom. So, you know, I have an expectation and I think that my teachers do a great job of it in terms of helping to identify with students what does work for them and presenting them with different options as it relates to, you know, prepping for, prepping, you know, studying was one thing that you mentioned. There are a number of ways you can do that and it is different for everybody. I think, you know, as studying pertains to social studies, in that social studies class is a great time and opportunity to be able to address those skills.
That's, I agree. And that's why I was saying, embedding it somehow into our curriculum to, these are right, studying for social studies is very different than studying for math. Or for a spelling test or.
Definitely something though that, I hear your point and it's, it's something that we continue to work at and I think the teachers are doing a good job with it, but we'll certainly keep an eye on it and what we can do to.
I love what Ms. Callender and Mr. Dickey do. That's awesome.
Quick question.
It's a really benefit.
Sorry, I'm a nerd. I like outcomes and measurements and I'm just curious to know, like, and I know you're in the early stages of it, but is there a way to kind of gauge how well we're doing with the program?
With regard to what in particular?
If we're looking for outcomes for, whether it's time management or, you know, concurrent activities, is there a way to kind of measure if they're achieving these skills? Are they requiring these skills or they're not? And is there, is there a way to measure that through the Guidance Department?
I think what we'll likely do, once the areas have been identified that the Guidance Department is going to focus upon, they'll then develop their lessons to deliver to students. And then following that, I would expect there to be some feedback that teachers provide back to Guidance with regard to the effectiveness of that particular lesson. So that in the same way that, you know, we go to a professional development opportunity that's been created by Dr. Williams and the PD Academy and we provide them feedback both as to whether or not it pertains to what we're going to do and any feedback that we would give relative to the presentation. So I would think that that'll be sort of a closing piece of this particular project.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Sylvia, East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Principal.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for your time. Good evening. What I'm passing around is a timeline for hopefully the scheduling for the 2020, 2021 school year. I was going to sit on that for a little bit before go over a few other things. But while you have it, I might as well go over a couple of things. Mrs. Clifford and I worked on this a little bit and we kind of did a very brief sketch of what we feel is closer to where we'd like to be for scheduling for students for next year. So right now, I'm working with the instruction lead teachers and working on the program of studies. So we're trying to clean it up as best we can. We're working on that. We also gave our staff an opportunity to create a proposal for any type of new course, whether it be a semester course or a full-length, full-year course. I have about 12 proposals that I will schedule an appointment with Dr. Williams and Mr. Shea and go through. A lot of the proposals were semester-based courses, particularly in health and wellness, which was, they did a great job. Our PE staff did a nice job creating a lot of different options for our students when it comes to health and wellness. So we'll go through that, we'll eventually lock down the program of studies. The goal is to have that in print or updated by the break at Christmas. It does have December 1st, but December 1st is when we're going to send it out and hopefully have it updated. That is the goal for that. If you just go through, I know Mrs. Clifford put a lot of the MCAS dates, things like that, which we have on here. But ultimately, a small synopsis of this is the goal is to have the scheduling done by April vacation.
Can you repeat that?
By, the goal is by April vacation. That way we can, we can work it, you know, in my experience, again, it takes a lot of times to run the schedule, to find where the holes are. It would give us a significant amount of time, May and June, to really focus on that. I know it's been requested that we have, every student has a schedule going forward before they leave school for the end of the year. So that is, that's our target. Or at least by mailing with the report card, the final report card, that it might be difficult to lock down blocks in teachers and staffing depending on any type of changes that may occur. However, if students, at least, and parents get their schedule in hand going forward, it'll hopefully relieve some of the anxiety. And then by August 1st, on August 1st, to release the full schedule to students. So they have their classes, their blocks, their teachers. And then we can spend the month of August really working on any type of mistakes that do occur. So we are ready to go for the new school year of the 2021 school year. So that is the plan that we've sketched out. I can field any questions about that.
So tell me again, what was it that you wanted to have in their hands when they, on the last day of school?
Kind of like the receipts that colleges give out when they go select their courses. A lot of colleges give a receipt of, here are your list of courses you're definitely going.
So they don't have the periods and everything connected?
No, no, I think, again, we really got to look at, I'm working with Ms. Tavares with School Brains to see if we can do some sort of type of receipt because you never know the fluidity of the schedule. Which, again, in my experience has been changing, ever-changing.
So what's the benefit of giving them that on the last day of school if it's subject to possibly significant change?
Well, hopefully the subjects that they have are going to be locked in. So if they choose their electives, those electives will be, will lock in. We just now have to look at potentially matching electives up that are semester courses with another, with how it's going to run and to operate it smoothly.
Just so you know, in past years, schedules haven't been done until, give or take, two weeks before school.
I knew that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is like.
It's great.
In any dramatic changes that would occur over the summer, that we would contact those students and their families.
That's what I'm worried about. So you wouldn't envision a scenario where 30% of the kids are getting their schedule changed from what they had thought they were getting at the last day of school? I mean, it might be a smaller amount.
That's, the goal is to reduce that number as much as possible. You know, there is a trial and error period. We have to work with School Brains to run the schedule, to make sure there are no mistakes or doubled up or, you know, that is ultimately the goal. You know, there may be, to really have more eyes than just a couple of sets of eyes. That way we can utilize the staff prior to them leaving for their vacation in the summer and then, and then we can just work on all those mistakes over the course of the summer. And if things work out, maybe we can release it a little earlier. But, you know, I don't want to handcuff ourselves to a certain date and just really mess it up. We want to do it with fidelity and we want to do it with authenticity, so.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
As far as the second item, the NEAS report. We are on our two-year annual progress report. We did contact our liaison with NEAS and Kathleen Montagno. And she, I worked with her over the last month or so and we received an extension. It was due October 1st. So we received an extension due to a little bit of turmoil in, or the changes that have taken place. So I'm working closely with Kathleen. The three, the two items that we, she wants. Um, the three, the two items that we, she wants us to focus on is the vision of the graduate, uh, and how to develop a plan to ensure that all students have access or an opportunity to achieve that vision that we created. So, uh, right now, I have a committee of eight that is working on that vision. Uh, it started last year, believe it or not, and so we're just gonna continue the work of the four individuals from last year. We've added to that committee, uh, I would like to add a couple more people to that committee. I think, uh, the more we have it, the more discussions we can take place, uh, the more variety that we can have. So, um, we're working with that. Uh, Kathleen from NEASC is going to come after the holidays and meet with us here at the school, uh, so we haven't had a lockdown date on that, um, because things, again, get a little hectic during the holiday period. Um, so our goal is in January to sit down with her, to show her uh, progress of where we are, um, and then once we get her input, to sit down and write that report, uh, have it done by February, about the fourteenth, which is right around um, winter break, uh, provide it to um, the superintendent's office to to take a look at it, uh, and then upload it by the end of February, which um, would give us a little bit of time. Um, once everyone approves it and feels the language is correct and and the the progress report is okay, upload it and um, send it off for the results of that um, progress report, which would probably be, I would say, either June or afterwards that we would receive um, correspondence back from the committee NEASC organization, so.
Mr. Sylvia, could you?
Yep.
The folks at home who may not relate to the NEASC abbreviation, can you just tell them what that represents?
Sure, it's the New England Accreditation of of School Council, so it it's basically, it gives us our school accreditation, um, you know, it provides a lot of opportunity for us. It really takes a look at um, an opportunity for for the staff, the community, to look at the school as a whole in several areas and and find out where our deficiencies may lie, um, a lot of recommendations they may have that can get us, uh, point the needle in a better direction. Um, and, you know, they did a nice job with uh, the one-year progress report that was written, that was due uh, last March, uh, which there was about nine recommendations and now there are only two. So, um, you know, we're just gonna continue the work that has been done in the past, so, uh, and then on the five-year, in uh, three years from now, so in the twenty twenty-three year, uh, we'll have to redo a five-year report, progress report, based on their recommendations from our two-year report. And then we turn our attention to preparing for the next day centennial uh, visit, so that's, that's where we'll be looking at. So it it is a process, um, but it's a great process for us as as a community and as a school to see where we lie, um, and it's ever changed, uh, they just changed the standards, uh, they went from about seven to four, um, which still encompasses a lot of the same ideas, um, but it does give us a lot of opportunities to, um, you know, again, uh, self-assess ourselves, uh, and and work with um, a lot of the stakeholders, the community members, school committee, superintendent's office, um, as well as the staff, um, all staff, from teachers all the way to um, cafeteria staff and and custodial staff. We get to really work um, on 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 seeing, creating a vision for for East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School. So it gives us an opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I do. I'm gonna kind of bundle everything into, uh, I have three questions that I'm gonna bundle into one. Um, I'm going back to my financial services days, when I was dealing with the government, um, and the the three questions we always ask are, are we in compliance? Are we on track to remain in compliance? And what are the obstacles that would prevent us from being in compliance? Do you, do you see anything troublesome that, you know, we we could do resource allocation wise that would allow us to?
Right now?
Obstacles or?
I appreciate.
And I know.
It's an excellent question, and right now, based on on the information that I'm, I've been looking at, um, we are in compliance. Uh, we do, we are an accredited institution, um, however, we, the vision of the graduate is something new that all districts are are starting to adopt, uh, and it it's it's creating a rigorous curriculum that they, we can prepare them for college, career, military, whatever our students choose. So, um, we, we do a lot of borrowing, we are, we look at a lot of of other local schools that that have that vision of graduate right now and and try to take from them some of their ideas and modify it. Our core values have been um, complimented uh, for the district, so we we are in compliance and and as far as obstacles go, right now, it's just a matter of putting it to practice. How are we going to give every student an opportunity to um, achieve and participate, well, participate and achieve what we state to this organization?
I want to do more than, I want us to obviously do more than just check the box.
Mm-hmm.
But checking the box is kind of important.
Yeah, correct.
Just to make sure that when we're dealing with DESI or whomever it is, or like the 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 um, governing body is, that they know that we are, you know, meeting our deadlines and our requirements, um, all along the pathway. Um, so that's where, that's where they want to get down to, is like, is there anything that's, that we should be worried about? Anything that we, that we could look at to say, hey, you know, we could throw some resources at something if we see a problem coming down the road?
Well, I think, I think.
I like to say it loud and early.
No, right, no, you're right, but I.
Rather than quietly and late.
The work that's been, the groundwork that has been laid is is, they did a nice job in the past, and I'm just basically adopting what they've done in the past and continuing that path. So, um, it's been established very well, uh, so it's it's a matter of making sure that I upload that two-year progress, annual progress report by March first. Um, and then once we do that, it's really, we 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 sit back, reanalyze it on a yearly basis, uh, that that vision and 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 the the path that we choose to make, to ensure our students are achieving that, um, and tweaking it as we go. And then on the five-year, once again, we based, we we create a five-year progress um, based on their report that they sent to us. So, uh, right now, we're in really good shape. Uh, it's just a matter of, uh, when I saw the October first deadline, I was a little panicky, um, but I did contact um, the organization and uh, they put me right with our liaison who's been phenomenal, and she's willing to work with us every step of the way. And 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 she even recommended, she goes, first thing we're gonna do is give you an extension because of some of the changes that have taken place. So I appreciated it, I've sent her an email, sent um, a few people, uh, an opportunity to say thank you, just to um, to give us that chance, so, uh, and she said, well, once things settle in, we'll, we'll, here's what you need to do. She gave us pretty much a step-by-step process and then she's gonna come in January, um, to to really nail down this report, so.
All right.
Things, things are good.
And Jeff, is it fair to say, um, to to Rob's question, which I think is a really good one, and until you really get the vision of the graduate nailed down, you really don't know what resources you need yet.
Correct.
That's a little later in the process, right?
Correct, I think.
I mean, my guess is, at some point, the resource conversation is gonna have to happen because I know one of the critiques, or whatever we call them, in in the NEASC report was, not enough curriculum offerings.
Correct.
So I mean, that that conversation is gonna have to happen, but is it fair to say we're still a little too early in the process?
Um, it's never too early. Uh, I think, uh, you know, we look at 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 curriculum offerings is, I think, what we're doing with the program of studies. That was one of the reasons why we're, we really need to revamp that and 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 overhaul it a little bit, just to update it. Um, that really qualifies us for that checkbox, uh, that we are, we're focusing on providing more opportunities for students. Uh, so, once we submit that report, uh, once they send us back their um, their findings, then we can work towards what we need. So it would be more after their their.
Right.
Their correspondence back is when we can really look at what we need to 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 do going forward.
We look forward to hearing an update.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd be much on the spot, but.
Thank you.
I'm confident.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all your hard work on that. Um, next up, we have policy dis, uh, policy disposal of surplus property file DN, and um, Mr. Shea, would you like to expand upon this policy?
Sure, uh, we we have, we have some, uh, old desks and old chairs that we would like to, um, get rid of and as, while I was researching how how to do it in the in the legal way, um, I noticed we didn't have a disposal of surplus property policy, um, in our, in our, uh, policy manual. So I created this one after reviewing, uh, a lot of different, uh, schools, how they handled their, uh, their disposal, uh, uh, policy. I thought this was pretty simple, um, it it gives a.
You so kindly brought it to the policy subcommittee.
Yes.
And we reviewed it and tweaked it.
Yes.
Just a little bit.
Tweak it a little bit. Uh, I, I asked Brian Noble, the town administrator, to review it. He tweaked it a little bit, so I, I think it's a simple policy and I'd like to get started.
I'm surprised that, given that we just basically redid the whole, to the mask, that this, is that not in their standard policy manual? Wow.
There, I mean, mask general law, um.
I mean, it does, but but I'm surprised, but we kind of pulled masks, recommended policies into ours, that they didn't have one. I'm ju, I'm just surprised it got missed, no biggie.
Maybe it's because of chapter thirty B of Master General Law covers this, it's just that, uh, mask, chapter thirty B allows you to dispose of property in accordance with, uh, agreed upon, agreed upon procedures by the governmental unit, which would be you guys, and we didn't have an agreed to, agreed upon procedure, so that's why I created this.
So, um, so the policy subcommittee reviewed it and, um, we all thought it was fine, and, after the tweaking, and, um, so Mr. Shea would like to, Mr. Shea would like to be able to move, because I said, I had asked him, oh, we could just bring it to the next November meeting, but he wanted to get cracking on being able to dispose of some items, and so, um, so we have two action items regarding this policy tonight, if you all so deem appropriate, um, we could, I could make a motion to waive the three reading process and vote on the first reading on this proposed new policy, um, disposal of surplus property file DN.
I'll make that motion.
Sure, motion by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Gordon. Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And so I would take a motion to approve school committee, um, policy disposal of surplus property file DN.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gordon. Move both at the same time.
You can have it.
Second?
Second by Tim.
Second by Tim?
Tim.
All in favor?
Aye.
All unanimous. Thank you. There you go, John.
You get to, you get to number three, call me.
Did that involve band uniforms? Did we find a place to get rid of those? Uh, get rid of them, sorry. Secondary market?
Now, now that we have a policy.
So, um, I do not see anyone here for public comment section, and at this time, we've, we can quickly go through the action items. I have, um, I would take a motion to approve school committee meeting minutes from October eighth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Move by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
That's five and one abstention, five yeses. Um, action is, or I take a motion to approve school committee workshop minutes from October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Move by Gordon. Second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
That's five in favor, one abstention. I take a motion to approve payroll warrant sixteen SV dated October sixteen, two thousand nineteen, seventeen SV dated October twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, nineteen SV dated November sixth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Move by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Rob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would take a motion to approve payroll warrant sixteen PS dated October sixteen, two thousand nineteen, and eighteen PS dated October thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Move by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Rob, all in favor?
Aye.
All unanimous. And, um, I would take a motion after discussion, or we can discuss it after somebody motions, to approve to hire SAAM Architecture to investigate and document existing conditions and provide a report with design and system recommendations for converting spaces within the Gordon W. Mitchell School into a daycare facility.
Well, uh, move for purpose of the discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Williams, would you like to, um, expand upon this?
Sure. So the surplus was prompted by, um, the need for us to look at additional space at the Gordon Mitchell School that has not been used in almost ten years now. Um, it was the industrial arts classrooms, two classrooms, uh, on the bottom floor of the, uh, Mitchell School that really has been used for storage purposes of unused uh, furniture, um, since, um, the industrial arts program was discontinued at the Gordon Mitchell School. Um, in discussions with Lisa Verasso, our before and after care director, that program continues to grow. Uh, we would love to have a space dedicated for the purpose of before and after care. Uh, as you know, right now, they're utilizing space within, uh, the school building, specifically in the cafeteria, they use the gymnasium, the auditorium, uh, but to have, um, their own dedicated space, which ultimately, we're hoping that space, uh, would then allow for its own access to and from. Right now, uh, we did install a, a, um, a bell, um, so that parents could be rung in, however, when the school is being utilized by other organizations, we have people coming and going. So, uh, for two purposes, one, to increase the security of students in our before and after care program, uh, and two, having a space that's solely dedicated for the purposes of daycare, uh, and it can be designed for that purpose. So looking at the existing space, because when the building, uh, was built, it was not built for that purpose, uh, we need to look at code compliance, we need to look at regulations to bring that space up to, um, where it's needed for us to be able to do that. Uh, Mr. Shea and myself, along with Mrs. Verasso, we've met with, um, facilities, uh, for the town, Mr. John Haynes, as well as Brian Kylie, uh, we've met with the building inspector, we've met with the town administrator, uh, the fire chief, there was cast of thousands that we've, um, been meeting with, uh, because certainly we want to do it the proper way. Um, and ultimately, um, in in speaking with the building inspector, um, this is what we would need to do, in order for them to be agreeable to meeting of all code regulations, uh, at a minimum, we need to get this space, um, compliant. Um, and so this proposal in front of you would allow us to take a look at the area and see, uh, what needs to actually be done so that we have a scope of a project. Uh, this would be funded through our revolver, um, in the before and after care program, and as you know, in the reports that Mr. Shea has provided, um, that account is pretty lucrative, uh, and the sole reason for that is for us to get to a point where we can renovate a space, uh, and have it dedicated for the sole purposes of before and after care. Uh, we're looking really at, uh, phase one, getting this, um, facility, uh, to a point where it's functional, um, for the students. There will be a second part to that, where we're partnering with, um, my brother, as the Skylar Fund, um, has, uh, closed off its portion of the memorial fund, we are looking for one final project, uh, as well as Sydney Craven Fund, uh, so they'd be looking at renovating, um, the outside, there's tennis courts right now, maybe converting those to basketball courts, as well as looking at a way for parents to access the back of the building and have direct access to before and after care without needing to, um, go through the rest of the building. So with your approval, we would be able to move forward in, uh, looking at that space more closely to see, um, what we would need to do to get it, um, ready for daycare purposes.
Does anybody have any more?
Um, so I'm completely on board, I think it's a great idea, it, I'm just curious to know, SAM Architecture, S A A M?
Yes.
Why, is this the only?
So this is a firm that, uh, the town uses quite regularly, um, they actually would contract out, you can see on the second page, um, that they're sort of the management group, um, and then they would be reaching out to other, uh, vendors that they utilize. Um, and like I said, it's because the, we don't need to go to bid because each of the individual prices do not meet that threshold with us needing to bid it out.
Oh, okay.
Um, and this would really just be the beginning phases. Once we moved into actually having a design, then we would possibly be looking at a bid process for that work.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation. Does anybody have any further questions?
And the ultimate goal of making a daycare. And the ultimate goal of making it daycare, that'd be a.
A revenue generator, too.
Revenue generator for the district?
In service of the town.
Yeah, so initially, we'd be looking for it to be specifically for the students at the Gordon Mitchell School for grades three through six. Certainly, the other consideration that can be done down the way is to look at it as housing for all of our students. That takes into account transportation as well, to get students back and forth. So we figured initially, it would be for grades three through six.
Do we still currently, I know we used to, several years ago, have second grade kids go to before care at Mitchell, and then get bused down to Central in the mornings?
So now, they're all housed at the building that they attend.
Gotcha, okay. So that would ideally stay that way with this?
It would. Our biggest issue with that right now is because we have preschoolers attending the before care, and we don't transport preschoolers on a school bus. So initially, we'd be keeping pre-K to two at the Central School, and this would be for the purposes of grades three through six.
Thank you.
Smart.
So at this time, I would take a motion to approve to hire S A A M Architecture to investigate and document existing conditions and provide a report with design and system recommendations for converting spaces within the Gordon W. Mitchell School into a daycare facility.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Rob, second by Teresa. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That was unanimous. I would take a motion to approve or accept the very generous donation in the amount of $500 from Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare, given to Mickey, given to, by Mickey, that is not written, given to Mickey Lazzie for the drama club.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare. And at this time, I would take a motion to accept the very generous donation in the amount of $8,453.03 from the Gordon W. Mitchell School PTA. One donation was given to purchase steam lab consumables for steam night at $453.03, and the second donation, in the amount of $8,000, will be used for field trips for each grade.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
It was unanimous. Thank you to the PTA at the Gordon W. Mitchell School. Kiara, how was your first meeting?
It was very exciting. It was fun to be here.
What happened to happen?
Not over that far.
All right.
We have, just a reminder, Central School has parent teacher conferences Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Tomorrow will be six, seven degrees when students are getting on the bus.
Yikes.
There is a wind warning tonight, and in the morning, I would just say to parents, please, dress your child warm if you're waiting for the buses. We go as quickly as we can on bus arrival on those days, and we usually will pick up students who are usually walkers, or on their bikes, or this or that. So we just ask parents, make sure that your child is dressed properly for school tomorrow. It is going to be very cold waiting for the buses. Mittens, hats, scarves, and.
No shorts.
And jackets.
Good luck.
Again.
I know, I bet there'll still be kids in shorts.
And again, any principal would tell you, dress your child appropriately for school, meaning, wear a sweatshirt that can be taken off. On the third, on the second floor of the Central School, it gets very, very hot. On the sixth grade at the Mitchell School, it's hot, but in the fourth grade, it's not hot. It's a school. Temperatures go up, temperatures go down, they go in.
This building too.
This building can be like that as well.
It's seven degrees.
But it's going to be seven degrees. We did, Brian Kylie was in our office today. He did say that he was checking. He had went through, and everything was working, but I always like to just make sure that everybody's going to be well-prepared tomorrow. Please, it's going to be six degrees in the morning.
Frostbite happens quickly.
Just dress for the conditions. Thank you.
Does the heat work in John's office?
The heat works in John's office. It does not work in mine and Dr. Williams' office.
Get right on that, Ms. T.
That's why Mr. Shea's going to wait all night to go. We have heaters in our office.
At this time, I would take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa. Second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.